It's zoning. Twenty-three, zero, 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 seven, zero. Flash Property Management LLC. To request for zoning, I'll read what's published, but I guess there'll be some changes due to commercial buddy commercial. Rezoning from R four, single family residential to B two, general business. Variation reduced to north rear yard setback from the required forty feet to approximately ten feet. Variation reduced the east interior yard setback from forty feet to approximately ten feet. And reduction in use of yards by conditional use procedure. A conditional use to reduce the south front yard setback by fifty percent from the required forty feet to approximately twenty feet. And B, the conditional use to reduce the west interior side yard setback from fifty percent of the required twenty feet to approximately ten feet. The owner is Flash Property Management LLC. The address is twenty-four West two eighty St. Charles Road, Carroll Stream. Milton Township. It's approximately two point nine one acres on Well and Septic. And it was published in the Daily Herald on October twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-three for tonight's meeting. Having said that, we had a brief discussion, I'll direct just as to what the exhibits will be. You want to introduce your exhibits?
Yeah, sure. Good evening, everyone. Nice to see you again. Brian Armstrong for the petitioner. John Messina, the principal of the applicant Flash Property Management is here tonight. There's some other people who'll speak briefly. The exhibits that we have submitted to the portal and we marked are exhibit one, which is a survey. Exhibit two is this site plan here that you see on the easel. Exhibit three is a land use and zoning plan that Mr. Abel will talk about, which is this board right here. Four is a landscape plan that we have here that Mr. Abel will also talk about. Exhibit five and exhibit six are photographs that I don't have blown up, but I'll pass them around so everybody can see them. They're photographs of the ComEd power towers and power lines that are just north of the property. So they're behind the property. This. Here, so hopefully you can all see it. Here, exhibit two is the site plan that shows the, shows the property. Just to the north of the property is the Great Western Trail. And then just to the north of that is the ComEd power line easement that were, for which the power lines and power towers are shown in exhibits five and six. We'll circulate those, you can see those. And.
Can you raise your right hand and I'll swear you in, please? You just soundly swear from the testimony about to give and have given will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God.
And just a quick clarification, exhibit five is the one with the building and exhibit six is just the, and the antennas and wires.
Correct.
Do you have other people you plan to cause witnesses?
I do. You want to swear them all at once?
I'd swear them all in at once.
Just raise your right hands, please. You just soundly swear affirm the testimony about to give it this cause now adhering will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God.
Yes. Okay, and just so the record is clear, the people who, I'll introduce them as they testify, but John Messina, I mean SS Mariana, the principal of the owner. Mike Mysenga, M U I S D N G A, real estate professional, and Joe Abel, A B E L, a land player. As, as Chair Cutter said, the request is for rezoning from R four, single family to B two. Initially, the request included a variation for the east side of the property, which is here on exhibit two, the east side. Because the property to the east, adjacent to the east is used commercial, by the code, the setback here on the east side is twenty feet. We're not asking for any relief from that setback. So on the east side, we're living with the twenty foot setback as set forth in the code. So to the extent that your notice, as you see in front of you, asks for reduction in setback on the east side, we're withdrawing that request. We're going to live with the twenty foot setback on the east side. On the west side, similar situation, per the code, the setback on the west side is twenty feet. We're also withdrawing the request for relief on the west side, will live with the twenty foot setback on the west side. On the south side, which is the front lot, or the front of the, the front yard, where the setback by the code is forty feet, we're asking for a reduction of fifty percent to twenty feet pursuant to the conditional use procedure that allows up to fifty percent reduction in yards. And then also, the rear yard on the north side, by the code, the setback is twenty feet of the yard. Then we're asking for fifty percent reduction by the conditional use procedure set forth in the code to ten feet. Some of you may be familiar with the property. It is, what I refer to as the Medina Horse Property. They used to, you know, the, the organization used to have, keep a bunch of horses there and have riding there. So the, the property consists of what was an indoor riding area that's about seven thousand square feet here on the west end of the building. And then moving east, the next part of the building is about a fifteen hundred square foot intermediate building, which is going to be used as the, as the construction office for the applicant. There'll be probably one to two, occasionally three people, but generally one to two people in this office during the day. And then the easternmost portion of the building is the old stable. That's about five thousand square feet. That's going to be used for storage of equipment and tools. I didn't mention this, but the building on the far west side, the former riding area, is also going to be indoor storage for equipment and certain vehicles. It's a, it's a concrete block building. There's not going to, the applicant is not adding any addition to the building. It's going to make some cosmetic improvements as far as the roof, the siding, and windows, some paint, things like that, but no additional structure, no additions to the building. We will add parking spaces here in front under the code or required. Because of the occupancy, I think actually to have only one parking space, maybe two. We're going to install a total of ten right here in front of the building, so there'll be more than enough parking according to the code.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
I looked through all this today. What are you trying to do in this building and what is it doing now?
I was just going to get to that.
Okay.
Right now, yeah, it's, so as I said, it was Medina Horse Property.
Right.
The applicant is a construction company, so they're going to use this office as a construction office. And then they will have both indoor and outdoor storage of vehicles related to the construction business and equipment related to the construction business. So we're talking about things like skid steers, small end loaders, Bobcats, trailers. They do do demolition on the job site, so they have some trucks that are equipped for dumping demolition material into it from a job site, and then taking it to a dump. So those are the types of things that are going to be stored either inside or outside. They also will store some supplies, you know, roofing materials, siding materials, things that are used in their, in their construction business.
Is this a point where you could pause in your, in some one minute?
Sure.
I just realized I didn't read in the information. Building partner has no objections. Do dot objects BBC shed shown on the site plan and final plan is encroaching on the county's Great Western Trail. Is that something you could move?
That shed has been removed already.
Okay. Health Department has no objections, stormwater, no objections. Public Works has no jurisdiction. Externally, no comment from Carroll Stream. Odette Bydell Heights has no issue. One Ellen, Wheaton, Winfield, and Milton Township had no comment. Township Highway of Milton has no objection. Carroll Stream Fire District has done, and there was no comments from the school district or the forest preserve.
Mr. Chairman, I just want to clarify something on the do dot, Division of Transportation objection. Staff provides documentation to all the disciplines and outside agencies. There are four categories where they can check boxes. Do dot checked the box relative to object. But just to be clear, their only objection was relative to a shed that, that used to cross over the property line on the Great Western Trail. That's no longer there. So I talked to do dot today and they indicated that they will revise that letter to indicate they have no objections specifically rather than the transportation issues.
And then as far as operations, typically what will happen is employees will come to the site in their personal vehicles, park their vehicles there. Then they will take a company vehicle, truck or trailer or whatever, and drive that off the site. So their personal vehicles replace the vehicles temporarily that they're using for work. At the end of the day, they'll come back, put the work vehicles back in the site and then drive their personal vehicles home. So that'll be the nature of the traffic in and out of the property and the, the kind of the daily turnover of the types of vehicles that will be stored temporarily. Mr. Messina, just before I move on, everything I said about the nature of the property, you still talking about that?
Yeah, clear.
So the first thing we're asking for is rezoning again to B two. And Joe Abel will talk about the uses and zoning of the surrounding property. You all know Mr. Abel pretty well. Just in summary, I'll give you a heads up, as I'm sure you're not, you won't be surprised to hear him say virtually all the properties surrounding the area are not used for residential, not zoned residential, even though this is zoned residential. Instead, they're commercial use, the commercial zoning. So rezoning to the commercial zoning, the B two zoning will be appropriate in this case. Property's not suitable for residential use, not suitable for residential zoning. Instead, it's suitable for business zoning. So Joe, would I welcome to talk about the land use and the zoning of the surrounding properties?
Good evening. I think I know just about everybody here. The record, my name is Joseph N. Cable, A B E L, the planning and zoning consultant. And as showing on your thing, I've been doing this for approximately fifty years. Wish you wouldn't have put that down. And I'm a qualified, he said, after working on hundreds of cases, so.
You know, we've seen enough of the presentation and the credentials, so we accept you as an expert.
The subject property is part of a small sliver of land that is still in the unincorporated area of DuPage County. Everything around it is within the village of Carroll Stream and has been used. As some of you know, I was director of planning for the county for seventeen years. A lot of it is developed in the county and is part of what we always showed on our comprehensive plan that we prepared. And this major intersection of St. Charles and Smalley both, that was always anticipated to be a heavier type commercial land use. And that's why you have restaurants, gasoline service stations, strips, commercial centers, all developed around this particular intersection. And for years, it always surprised me that there was this facility, almost an agricultural facility for the care of the horses. What's happening here now is the Medina horses are obviously no longer there. And these buildings are being converted to appropriate use. And so part of the problems with why we're asking for the variation in the front and a little bit in the back is that, as you can see, it's a very long and narrow property. It's, it's used primarily for the care of the horses, outside corrals and things of that nature. Because of that fact that it's long and narrow, when you get down to the the depth, that's why again, it's getting to the point that the R four is inappropriate. There's no way that anyone would develop single family in a neutral corridor like this, especially across from heavy or commercial within the village of Carroll Stream. And so part of the rationale there is that as you get onto this property at the western edge, when you, even the setbacks that were proposed, which is twenty foot in front, ten in the back, that only leaves at the le, at the west end about an eighty-six area of depth. It's pretty, it would be pretty hard to get a single family developed into the eighty-six. Even at the north, you're down to a hundred and eighteen, eighteen feet of frontage. So you have extremely long, narrow property. That's part of the hardship and the rationale for asking for that fifty percent setback. I mean, the twenty foot setback, even the frontage, the fifty percent reduction. In exchange, and that's why we're going through the process of a conditional use is that you'll see when I talk about the landscape plan, we have really enhanced the amount of landscaping that will be on this property. Because it's also elevated, it'd be almost impossible to see the type of operation that is going on in, in the property. And I'll get to the landscaping in a little bit. I think I've pretty much covered the whole idea of trend of development here for the area. You can see as you go to the west, the depth of the properties get even shallower than on the subject property. And there they've gone almost totally with heavier industrial type uses, lawn care service and things of that nature. And then there's the Augustino's area on the corner. Directly to the west of us is an animal hospital that's been there as long as I can remember. And they actually, actually have a small encroachment onto our property. When we originally looked at the, the idea that it was long and narrow, determined that because there's a bit of a slope there, there's no re, there's no reason to ask for any variation. And so that's why we're maintaining that, that twenty foot. There was a concern at the time that maybe it would be of some value, but it's, it's better off as a setback, especially with this particular use that has no setback at all, and actually some of the parking overhangs onto our subject property. The area to the north, as Brian has said, is the Great Western Trail, and then also the Commonwealth Edison. It just felt that by putting in additional landscaping in the back that because of the narrowness of the property, that there was some value in making this really viable project. And that was the reason for asking for that fifty percent reduction. But again, putting in additional landscaping that will enhance, not only the property, but will enhance the Great Western Trail. Landscape plan. There's a subject, you have the landscape plan in front of you. It's second sheet. We have maintained, as I said, the, 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 the east and west, the, the area. There's two large trees on the western portion and they enhance that with landscaping. And then landscaping entirely across the northern boundary. The point system, we stayed pretty close to the amount of points that are required for a conditional use. So under the conditional use, we have to submit this landscape plan. You'll see that on the eastern border, we're, we're just about, the landscape requirement is fourteen hundred and forty-eight or fourteen seventy-four. Made the requirement at the back and also in the western edge. However, we came to the twenty foot reduction in the front along East St. Charles Road. We decided there, in exchange for that reduction, we would increase the landscaping by twenty-three percent. So the required points were five thousand eight hundred and eighty-eight and the points that were providing like seven thousand two hundred and forty. So that's a twenty-three percent increase in the amount of landscaping material. I'll just go back to the other exhibit for a second and see how this is really going to stand out as an exceptional piece of property that's done. When you look at the properties directly across the street, you'll see carefully looking at, there's almost no landscaping by the trees, none of that. The setbacks or the village tavern and rural parking that's on that side, they are within twelve feet of the right way. Carroll Stream does not enforce the same setback that you do. And therefore you'll see that directly across the street, the parking is within twelve feet of the right way. The car wash is at, at the twenty. The shopping center varies from twenty to down to five feet portion of the driveway. And the wellness spa, their parking is within five feet. So the twenty feet that'll be across the street, subject property is not only elevated, but again, will be totally landscaped. Meeting points that you deem as reasonable, I think we're adding to that another twenty-three percent. In terms of meeting the actual standards, for your condition use and rezoning, or just go through a period of. Oh, okay. I think that's the main thing I wanted to get across. And it turned into development is their care for the area, in my professional opinion, this is a more than appropriate use for the property. Thank you.
And Joe, just one thing in sum, in your, in your opinion, rezoning of the property and the reduction of the setbacks by the conditional use procedure is appropriate here for this property, given the surrounding uses of the property, given the surroundings, the zoning of the surrounding property, given the trend of development, given the county's comprehensive plan.
Yeah, that's the important thing. It isn't, it's non-residential on the county's plan for this area.
How it fits in with the plan and with the intent and spirit of the zoning, correct?
Correct.
Yeah, one, one thing I wanted to introduce to everyone, so just the, the property here is pro, is about, I would say at least ten, the elevation is at least about ten feet higher than the surface of the road. This driveway is a pretty significant steep hill if you're into the property. So what, and so what that means is once this landscape in here on the south side matures, people driving, and they should be looking at the road, not looking at the, at the neighboring property. But even if they take a peek, they're not going to be able to see what's going on here because, because they have to look up. And what they're going to look up to is mature vegetation, so that, so the traffic will not see what's going on on the property. Next, we have Mike Mysenga. Mike, you can come up here and just stand with me for a little. Mike Mysenga is a real estate professional in DuPage County. He's been a real estate professional for more than fifteen years. He is designated as a Realtor and he's familiar with the property. He has inspected the property. He's also examined the surrounding properties in the area from his inspection and from his general experience as a Realtor. He's familiar with the area. He's dealt with properties in the area before. Mr. Mysenga, the, the property here, at least the, the trend of the development in the area in the last couple of decades has been commercial, not residential, is that right?
Correct.
Okay. And we can see that here from this exhibit four, that zoning, many of these exhibit, virtually everything in the area is commercial property, right?
Correct.
And the, in fact, the, the closest, most recent residential development in the area was a graduated living facility down on Geneva Road that was about, built about fifteen to twenty years ago, is that right?
Correct.
Yeah, so no other residential development in this area in the last two decades, basically. And based on your knowledge of the area and real estate trends and your expertise, is there any, let me ask you this. Would you say that the demand for this property as residential property is very poor?
Yes.
And, and based on your expertise and your knowledge of the area, would you say that the demand for the property to, this business property, the commercialism property is strong?
For a commercial, yes.
Yes, okay. And based on the demand as well as uses and zoning of the surrounding property, do you agree that the subject property really is not suitable for residential use or residential development?
Yes.
Okay, and, and you agree that it's really not suitable to be zoned residential for those reasons, correct?
Correct.
Okay, and for those reasons, you also agree that it's more suitable as a commercial use and commercial zoning, correct?
Absolutely.
Now, obviously, as a real estate professional, you know a lot about values of property and the effect of certain uses and zoning on values of property, correct?
Correct.
If the subject property is rezoned to B two zoning that the applicant is requesting, that's not going to adversely affect the value of any of the nearby properties, is it? Okay. And if it's used as the business, for the business use that you've heard tonight, that's not going to adversely affect the value of surrounding property, is it?
No.
And same questions with the reductions in the setbacks that are being requested. If those setbacks are reduced consistent with what the applicant's requesting, those reductions will not adversely affect or diminish the value of surrounding properties, correct?
Correct.
Okay. So in sum, in your professional opinion, if the relief here is granted, the rezoning and the reduction in setbacks is, is appropriate and is suitable, given the, the nature of this property, the use of this property, trend of development in the area, and the uses of the property near the subject property, right?
Correct.
Okay, so I'll try to be quick and sum up. Joe started, the standards for rezoning, you're well aware of them, but I'll just sum up that, I believe we've met all of the standards. The existing uses of the general area are largely commercial. And the trend of development certainly is commercial in the area, not residential. You heard that evidence from Mr. Abel and Mr. Mysenga. Again, the property is not really suitable for residential development for the reasons Mr. Abel said and for the reasons Mr. Mysenga said. It's just not minimal to residential development. It's very minimal to the use that's proposed by the applicant. And again, it's consistent with the county's comprehensive plan, which designates it as non-residential. I think the nearby properties show that it really should not be residential property. The nearby properties show that it should be zone conversion. If it, if residential zoning was proper for the property, somebody would probably be coming in asking for residential development, not commercial. Lastly, we heard from Mr. Mysenga, rezoning will not adversely affect the value of that property or a neighboring property. Quickly regarding the condition of use standards for the setbacks. Not going to, we're not doing any addition to the building, so it's not going to be any adverse impact on light and air of the property. It's not going to be any increase to fire hazard because the only additions is maybe just cosmetic changes to the property. We heard from the witnesses, grant the condition uses, if you, if you recommend the condition use reduction setbacks, that won't adversely affect the value of the property and other properties vicinity. There's no increase in congestion or traffic. There's no increase in congestion or traffic, St. Charles and Schmaly Road are obviously already. There's no regrading or anything that's going on that's going to adversely affect any flood, water issues or any potential flooding. And there's nothing that will adversely affect public health, safety and welfare. So with that, we request that you recommend the rezoning and reduction in setbacks and conditional use procedure that were requested, and I'm happy to take any questions if anybody has any.
Any questions from the board?
Just a quick one noticing on your landscape plan, the privacy fence, that's a 20 foot setback in the front.
Yeah, so there will be a fence with a screen in it in addition to the landscaping.
Stacks already in, correct?
The fence is, has been installed.
Yeah, I'm driving by that property every morning.
Yeah.
You didn't have a preconceived idea of this for tonight, did you?
I do have a question.
On a normal morning, how many trucks come out?
Well, there's probably between 10 and 15 employees coming in in the morning and the same number. So 10 to 15 roughly, you know, it's.
Once in the morning, the same guys, they're not in and out on the day. You leave at six o'clock, come back between three and five, one time in, one time out.
Then spoil piles for the.
On site.
Okay. That's no question.
Mr. Cutter?
Yes.
This is Bob Carthol. I didn't hear Mr. Mazenga's qualifications. I understand he's a real estate professional. Is he an MAI appraiser?
He is not. He's a Realtor.
Okay. Is this a, is the petitioner a contract purchaser?
No, the petitioner already owns the property, Mr. Carthol.
And does Mr. Mazenga have any interest as a broker on any side of a transaction here?
No, he's saying he does not.
Okay, thank you. Otherwise, I understand the request.
Okay. Are you under any time constraints or would you permitting or anything else on this?
No. No, right?
Yes.
Oh, you're on?
Yeah.
Okay. Yeah, okay.
So it's your request that if the board would be amenable, you'd like to close the open meeting and go into executive session to discuss, not executives, go into a session to discuss approval of it or a dial?
If you're prepared to do that tonight, yeah, we'd be happy to do that.
Well, I'm, I'm not prepared to vote tonight, but if you don't need my vote, then go right ahead and proceed.
First of all, let's clear up. I just saw a phone. I didn't know anybody was on. Bob, would you clarify that you were on and the reason why you're on for the state's attorney?
If, yes, I'm in Arizona on a business trip.
Okay. And I didn't ask for the qualifications of the real estate guy. It's not my case. However, they wanted to present him, they presented him as a Realtor. Do you have questions where you'd like to question him as to his credentials?
No, I heard his credentials. I didn't, I wasn't sure whether I heard whether he was an appraiser. Why are we voting tonight?
I had been led to believe that there was some type of problem with permits and that it needed to be moved along. But if it's not to flavor the board, then we won't, and we'll set it for a recommendation meeting.
Close the public hearing. I'll phone down tonight.
I'd prefer to think.
All right. The board seems to want to continue this to the next recommendation meeting, which is what date?
September 7.
So we.
No, I think there's another matter that's been scheduled for the seventh.
So turn that type to do it on Tuesday.
All right, there's a big hearing on this seventh. Why don't we schedule it for the fifth and come in on a Tuesday then? That moves it along more than normal, because otherwise it'd be in January.
Yeah, thank you. We appreciate that.
Five thirty on the fifth.
Is that okay with you, Robert?
Uh, yes, it is. Tuesday, the fifth of December?
Yes.
Yeah, that's, that's okay with me.
That would be at 5:30. And then we'll have our regular scheduled Thursday meeting on the seventh. Okay, then.
I also have no objection to consolidating this with, I don't know how long the meeting is going to go on the seventh. Maybe the staff has a view of that.
Can I ask clarification? The meeting on the seventh, is that a hearing you were saying?
Yes.
That starts at six. Why can't we meet at 5:30? For this recommendation, are there any other recommendations, Sash?
You could, you could literally meet at quarter to six and probably do the recommendation at quarter to six on Thursday.
Then let's just do that.
Okay, I was just referring to what I was hearing, 5:30 on Tuesday. All right, it'll be on the seventh at, well, you know, if we allow 15 minutes and we go 20, then the people that are regularly scheduled are over. What time, what time do you, Bob, what time do you think it's appropriate so that we don't run over?
Six o'clock. I mean, I mean, what's the difference? We schedule them both for six o'clock or 5:45 and we take whatever time it takes.
All right, it'll be, you'll be the first case on 12:07 at six o'clock. That'll be a recommendation meeting. When we close that, then we'll go into the regularly scheduled meeting. It'll be in this room. We could meet in this room for the recommendation. And we'll go out to record. Turn aside. The meeting that's scheduled on the seventh was continued. It is going to be a densely attended meeting, and it's going to be very in-depth. And it's noticed up, and I don't want to create any conflict that we didn't start it on time or they didn't get there full time. So that's why I originally said 12:05, but it doesn't seem like the flavor. So we'll do 12:07 at 5:30, and if recommendation runs over, then it's going to stop till the other one's done. And then you've already done your closing, correct?
Correct.
All right, so then the public meeting for tonight will be closed. I think we'll meet here at 5:30 for the recommendation and then go down to the cafeteria.
That's fine.
And is it published for the cafeteria while we're here? We didn't have to reopen it then.
So, so the recommendation meeting you are setting tonight for this room?
Yes.
So that's fine.
And the other one's already been rescheduled for the cafeteria.
Yes.
Yeah, and I think it's cleaner not to be discussing stuff when the other meeting is going to start. Okay, then we will adjourn.